Call to order, the meeting of the sanitation district. And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dijavani? Dr. Dazma Baal?
Here.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
President, thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second, first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item is the consent agenda. Now entertain the motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda. Mayor, this is Vice Mayor Manalo.
I got you. Motion, Vice Mayor Manalo is there, second.
Second.
Okay, second by Dijavani. So it looks like there's no items to be pulled. So all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you. All right, next item, the consent agenda has been approved. Next item is public appearances, oral communications.
Okay, let me check online real quick.
Okay.
Just refreshing here. No public comment online.
Thank you, Mr. Salty. All right, next item is reports. Do we have any reports from the board of directors? Okay, hearing none. Any reports from staff? Okay, I hear none as well. So I guess that's it. And this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone, and thank you for being here. All right. So the time now is seventeen, seven oh seven. Shall we move into starting the council member? Everyone is present? Let me see. Uh, yeah, it looks like we got mostly everyone. All right, so what we will do now, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the city council. Today is Monday, May eleventh. And if we can all rise for the pledge to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America. Republic.
Republic, for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation. Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you. All right, may I have a roll call, please? Madam City Clerk?
Ms. Dijavani?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Present.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present, thank you very much. Tonight, this evening, we have a few presentations. We'll first be starting up with the proclamation, May seventeenth to the twenty-third as National Public Works Week. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Chu of the Director of Public Works. Mr. Chu, are you here? Oh, there you are, okay, got you. All right, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is going to be a Public Works Week coming up next week, on, starting on the seventeenth. And it's really more about recognizing our staff that work every day to ensure the safety and well-being of our residents, visitors, and other city staff. We've got a lot of folks in public works from the mechanics that work on all the city vehicles and equipment for all the departments. Also, the custodians that are working extra hard during this period of time, just doing more sanitation and cleaning to protect all city staff. We have our park staff that's out there maintaining our parks and open space, just so people have a safe place to recreate. To our street staff that are repairing our pavements and sidewalk, so people can travel safely without injury. Also, our building maintenance staff that work on all the city facilities for all city staff and members of the public, just so that they have a comfortable and productive environment to work in. In addition to our street light and signal staff that keep traffic moving in an efficient and safe manner. And then finally, our engineering staff that work very, very hard to look for and apply for grant money, so that we can supplement our capital improvement program to maintain our city infrastructure. These are also the staff that help respond to some emergencies like flooding, traffic signal knockdowns, vehicle crashes, power outages, and other types of emergencies. So for the most part, this, this is also about awareness and having the public be aware of our public work staff and what they do every day. And ultimately, when we're doing our jobs well, the public doesn't even know we're there. And I have to also recognize my colleagues in our Department of Water and Waste Water Resources as well, in terms of maintaining the water and sewer system typically. That is also, in many agencies, also under public works as well. So I like to definitely give some recognition to, to my colleagues in water waste water as well. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chu, definitely so. I will have a comment. I'll open it up to my colleagues if they have any comments.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Thank you so much. Director Chu, to you and your staff, I just want to say thank you so much for your unyielding support to our community and making sure that our community is safe. And all the employees that are on the ground should definitely be recognized for all their hard work. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, yes, I too want to echo and then thank Mr. Chu. He's done an outstanding job, not just in his leadership, but in the care of his employees. He takes it very personal. He has a great relationship with them. I've actually seen that. And that takes a leadership when he brings them along and supports his employees. That is great leadership, and, uh, and they feel it. And also for the, on the streets, the street division, the parks, everything, these are dangerous times, and they have really truly stepped up to the plate. And during these times, and I think the community really recognizes that. So thank you very much to Mr. Chu and all of those out working hard every day, getting up in the morning, so that our community can remain safe and our well-being with picking everything up on the corner and continuum of pride in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hey, I would like to say something as well.
Sure, Dr. Rod.
Um, just like Mother's Day was yesterday, I want to say Mother's Day to all the mothers out there, but also like Mother's Day, like Mother's Day is every day. And I think that's what Public Works is, is more than a week. And sometimes it's not just the week that we appreciate you, but we appreciate you all the time. Mr. Chu said something like the, the most, like the, the signal of success for Public Works is when the public doesn't know. But I think the public needs to appreciate, like how we appreciate mothers doing work and caring for our community every single day. So thank you to Mr. Chu and Public Works, Mr. Piccolati. It is true, like we, we take it for granted in terms of having things cleaned up, things that need to be fixed up, things that need to have care, and we, we take it like clockwork. But we never get, get the time to appreciate the work that they do, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Okay. I'd like to make mention, I can't, Councilmember Dijavani kind of alluded to it as well. But I never, I never thought much about Public Works. But seeing on the inside as to what Public Works does, it has definitely opened my eyes quite a bit. And Dr. Rod kind of alluded to it when we talked about the Mother's Day event we had this past Sunday. I mean, this probably comes from the police department, but I'm sure Public Works was involved. I've never seen so many street cones on one city block or barricades. And sure enough, they were there. We asked for them, and I believe Councilmember Dijavani had something at the church and had asked for barricades. And yes, for the public safety, they were there. And I'm glad that Public Works can basically work with any department in our entire city for anything that comes up. I think about them going out to pick up the garbage. People report garbage that's on the, on the field, somebody has to do it, and they're the ones. So thank you, Mr. Chu, especially for the collaboration and the support for the entire city, not only other departments, but for the constituents and the citizens themselves. Thank you very much, sir, well deserved.
It's my pleasure, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other comments? Great, thank you again, Mr. Chu. And we'll move on to the next presentation proclaiming May tenth through the sixteenth as National Police Week. And we have Police Chief of Daly City, Mr. Patrick Hensley. Chief, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I appreciate it. I, I think it's great that there, we have this one time a year where cities all over the nation officially recognize all the great work that not just the police department, but fire departments and all the other public safety agencies are doing every single day. This has been a particularly trying time for law enforcement across the country, with something most of us have never faced, and that is a pandemic. And we've had to learn to shift our mission and our responsibilities a little bit. And without fail, without hesitation, the men and women of the Daly City Police Department have risen to that challenge and have done all the things they need to do to not only protect the community, but to protect each other. I'm, I, I have been, remain, and always will be very proud of everyone in the police department, be the, that be the sworn personnel or all of my professional staff that allow all the successes that the officers enjoy come with a lot of work behind the scenes to make sure that everything gets done, and they do it every day. Again, lately shifting their work, coming in on weekends to work, so that we all spread out and make sure we protect each other. So I would like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank the Vice Mayor, and I would like to thank the council for recognizing the great work that the men and women in the Daly City Police Department are doing every year. And again, we can remain very proud that they're out on the front lines every day, protecting this community and protecting each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Hensley, is there any comments from my colleagues at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Please, Vice Mayor Manalo.
Thank you very much. I just want to also extend a thank you to Chief Hensley. It's pretty amazing to have a local be the chief of police in the city of Daly City. And to all, every single person in your department, most especially during this time of the COVID-19 crisis, you know, we've seen what you guys have done in helping with whatever traffic needs for food distributions that have happened, but really stepped up in ways to support the community. So I just wanted to personally say thank you and to your whole team.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, hold on, Councilmember Dijavani, hold on. Uh, Ray Buena Ventura, Councilmember, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I need to step in here because this is probably the, the chance, the only chance I get to thank the chief and his whole department for what they did yesterday. And, and in the weeks in preparation for our event, we had a food distribution event yesterday. And without fail, the chief stepped up, and he did it, you know, when even early on with the food distribution over at Jefferson, he gave them vests without hesitation, without, I think, even being asked. He just thought it was necessary, and he did it for them, and he did it for us. Yesterday, when he provided the vests, the same vests, and also the coverage, the parking coordination. And they were, it was just tremendous. Logistically, it worked, it was just such precision in what was done. And everybody was happy, the traffic was flowing exactly right. And we were given constant updates on, on the flow and suggestions on when to move it and when to start and, and when to start setting up or, or loosening up. And so I, I just can't say enough of my gratitude to the chief, to the police department, to all the traffic people that were involved. This was a total group team effort, and they played a critical role. And I, I am deeply, deeply grateful for their work, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura. I believe we had Councilmember Dijavani wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, the chief, having you here locally, as Vice Mayor said, is you can tell your heart and soul is connected to Daly City and your family, everyone connected to you. And the leadership from the top always, it filters out into our community. You're always in the community, whether it's with PIT, everywhere. And I know we're limited on the number that we have as a POA and, and all that, but you make it work. And none of them, they all make it work together seamlessly and visibility, and the connectivity is amazing through the public and the image and the schools, everything you do that comes out is a great reflection of why we're special, our DCPD and having a chief like that. But we are really, really, really blessed to have you and your family and the rest of the POA and PD. So we are very one of a kind and keep it that way. So thank you so much, and not just for our police work, but for everything you do, you do with heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dijavani.
Mayor, may I say something?
I see you on mute, it's your Dr. Rod, go ahead.
Um, again, Chief Hensley, thank you again for showing up yesterday. I think this is one of the most important things is, um, as for myself, as being an educator, being in classroom, people tend to see the cops or teachers as authority figures and constantly already at the forefront intimidated. But I think one thing that DCPD does very well is building relationships. You're at all the community events, you're talking to folks. It makes people feel like we're all part of this community. And I just want to say thank you for all the community work that the police does, building, like, that's so key. Just building relations with, with folks, um, that, you know, the police are people too, you know, and to have this relationship with DCPD and with the community is something that, um, that is totally appreciated. Like what I mentioned, Public Works is sometimes like the best work is when people don't see or doesn't, doesn't know what you're, you're there, but you're, you're providing the security for, for the community where it feels like we're, we're all connected. So thank you again, Chief.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. You kind of stole most of what I was going to say. So subsequently, my comment's going to be a little bit shorter. Excuse me, Chief. Thank you, excuse me. Thank you so much. As Councilmember Buena Ventura stated, it's so great to have seen you over the weekend, but not just this past weekend. You're basically everywhere. And, uh, you know, you come to these events, you come with your wife, and that's a clear example of how much you care for your community. And it shows, you're the men and women in blue of Daly City Police Department. That comes from a true leader, and you, sir, are a leader. I can drive down the street, and every so often I see a police car, but for the most part, I don't see them. And you know what? That's a good thing, because when you don't see them, everything is okay. But when you do see them, they are there. So I'd like to thank you so much, Chief. You know what my previous profession was, and I will say this to you, sir. If I can do it all over again, I would love to work for you, sir. So great job, Chief, and thank you for everything that you do. All right. Okay, any other comments at this time? Okay, once again, thank you, Chief Hensley, Daly City Police. Okay, the next item on the agenda is proclaiming May third through the ninth as Public Service Recognition Week. And I have Ms. Leilani Ramos, Senior Management Analyst. Leilani, I could see her somewhere. Oh, there she is, okay, she's smiling. And, uh, before we go on, a quick, Chief Bravo?
Yes?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, I saw someone sitting in the chair, and I took my eyes off, and the person was gone in the background.
Yeah, that was the station crew here at Station ninety-four. They had, they had to run, you know how that goes.
Okay, no, no, I, I, I thought it was a mannequin, because it was so, it kept so still, you know, and I, I had to get that off my chest, but it's gone now. All right, thank you, Leilani, you have the floor, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor. So good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Public Service Recognition Week was observed from May third to May ninth this year. Twenty twenty marks thirty-six years of honoring public servants. This year is especially important to recognize the tremendous efforts of all of our city staff as we have had to adjust to new ways of offering public services to our Daly City community during the COVID-19 pandemic. Please enjoy this special video to commemorate their services.
Over the past several weeks, our community has experienced unprecedented impacts as a result of COVID-19. We know this has been a very difficult time for residents and businesses as the shelter-in-place order has had a tremendous effect on our livelihoods. As our community works together to stay home and save lives, there are still people that come to work every day because they are essential to the daily operation of our city. These essential workers are ensuring the safety and cleanliness of our city, providing clean water, maintaining our streets and public spaces, removing trash and debris from our parks, and distributing cooked meals and prepackaged food boxes to those in need. All eleven departments of the city of Daly City have been working tirelessly to support our community and preserve critical public services through the pandemic. By working together, we are reimagining how we conduct business, and we are reinventing programs to alter them in safe and oftentimes new and larger ways. For Public Service Recognition Week, we want to thank our staff for stepping up to meet the challenges. The North County Fire Authority never stopped providing support for our community and will continue to be there for medical, fire, and other emergency. Our police department has continued to operate uninterrupted in order to protect and serve Daly City residents and ensure our entire community is safe. This is a time when, as we learn more about the virus and do our part to flatten the curve, we adjust. We know that policies and health guidance have been changing quickly to slow the spread of COVID-19. Our city has done a great job at following the shelter-in-place order and social distancing guidelines, and it is the reason our healthcare system has not become overwhelmed. Thank you for doing your part to protect your neighbors, friends, and families. With your continued commitment, we will get through this pandemic as a unified community. Every essential worker for the city is fully committed to ensuring Daly City remains resilient and that our residents and businesses can recover from the COVID-19 pandemic. Generally, Daly City staff will continue to support you by offering the highest level of service. Remember, the actions we take today to stay at home will help tremendously down with them. As always, we are here for Daly City. Stay healthy, stay safe. We are Daly City strong, and we're in this together.
Wow, Leilani?
Yes.
Okay, you have the floor.
I just wanted to again thank all of our workers. They've done an incredible job during the pandemic. They are still here for all of our community every day.
Thank you very much, Leilani. Any comments from my colleagues?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Buena Ventura.
Yeah, I want to jump in and, and say right away, that was an incredible video. It had the, just the perfect tone. It was both calming and reassuring and, and comforting to, to know that we, that even though we're going through this, this is where we are in terms of taking care of, of the city. So, I mean, I, I think it's, I don't know, for me, it's an award-winning production, and it should be blasted on all our social media and as many outlets as possible, because this is the kind of thing that our, our community, our people need to hear. And it's a waste of, of, of production to just leave it there. This should be disseminated as quickly and as fast as possible, and be played on waves. Because this is what we need, and my goodness, to have the vision and the idea to put this together, well, let's, let's get as much mileage as we can out of it, and not just keep it on our website, so that's my thought, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If only.
Yes, please.
Thank you so much, Leilani, that was an amazing, and I echo Councilmember Ray Buena Ventura's comment on what a phenomenal video that really shows the compassion and care that the Daly City workers has, have done during this time, and really being at the forefront and giving all they can to ensure the safety, the communication, and really providing the services to our city and residents. And a big thank you to every single worker that has been there for our community and are the essential workers that are definitely driving the city to ensure that we are here to support one another. And I love that, you know, Daly City, we're stronger together, and Daly City strong. So thank you, and I, I agree, blast it, tweet it, put it on Instagram, Facebook it, and let everyone know. Thank you so much, Leilani.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, anyone else? Uh, yes, Dijavani, Councilmember?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Leilani, there's not so much to say that many, many people were new in different positions, or some have been there for many years. But it looked like everybody was, everybody that's working together collaboratively. One thing evolved to the next, and without hesitation, everybody stepped up. Some are doing things that they'd never done before, like in our recreation department, when they're doing meals, they took a two-hour class. They get certified to help in the kitchen. And, and no complaints, and just pitch right in. You guys came out with a second harvest without hesitation. And I know that you're there for your heart, you're not there for anything else, and the workers, the essential workers, everyone is essential, but essential for the water, for everything else, for our emergencies on the streets every day. During these COVID-19, we know that they're putting themselves at risk every day, and that goes unnoticed by most of us, we all realize this, and we want to keep them safe. And not just appreciate just during a certain week or whatever. I think that it, this needs to be ongoing, and I think that this city has set a tone with not just the video, but with, with all the workers together and leadership and, and a family. It's truly a family, a community, and yes, Councilmember Buena Ventura, that thing, it really is going viral. Because we have a lot to be proud of here in Daly City, and thank you, Leilani, for that. The tone is beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I say something? Uh, Leilani, what a beautiful video and production. You know, when this pandemic hit, we could have just all packed it in and just not do anything. But I think what that video demonstrates- But I think what that video demonstrates is like the adaptability to our situation, right? One of my favorite idols of all time is Bruce Lee. And one of his fighting techniques was called Jeet Kune Do. And he said about intercepting the fist and being able to adapt to any situation. So he said, like, be like water, right? If you want to be the teapot, you be like water. And I think that's what our public works, everybody that works in Daily City, our essential workers, has been doing, is that we are the flow. We've been like water. Whatever form that we try to take on, that's what we took on. And I want to say thank you to Leilani and everybody that are out there as essential workers.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Okay, I guess everyone said basically everything, but I want to add just a little bit. And that is, as Mr. Buenaventura stated, the tone of the video. When I first started hearing it, you ever seen a grown man cry? And, I mean, the tone, you can't explain it. And we need to get this out. I would appreciate, Leilani, if you would send us the link, because you know we are social media hounds. Folks will never see this video if they come to, they'll only see it if they come to DailyCity.org. But you know what? Send us the link. We will get it out there. And if you ever heard the term word of mouth? I mean, this will get out, and other folks will probably try to copy what we have done. If I'm not mistaken, the Daily City Recreation Department also did a video, not only saying, you know, being safe, but their content of the video was, "We miss you." And to hear everybody say, "We miss you, we miss you," and from the various different departments, it can go a long way. So please, send us the link, Leilani, and let's get this out. And it will go from there, but job well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? And of course, I know all this would not be happening if we didn't have a great city manager such as Shauna, because I'm sure folks run things through her, and her typical words are, "Oh, cool, let's do it." So, great job, Shauna. I just want to acknowledge you as well. Okay, great. All right, shall we move on? Okay, next item is proclaiming June 2020 as Pride Month. And we have Craig Weisner. He's the County Commissioner of the LGBTQ Commission. And I thought I saw a new face. Craig, welcome, I mean, welcome aboard, Craig, and you have the floor, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I'm so grateful that the city my husband and I have lived in for nearly three decades is proclaiming June as Pride Month and raising the rainbow flag on June 1st. In my role as County Commissioner on the LGBTQ Commission, I know how much this means to LGBTQ people, but it's critically important for our LGBTQ youth and our seniors to know that their city, our city, is welcoming and safe. So I invite everyone who's listening to join us for a countywide online Pride Celebration on June 13th from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Visit SanMateoPride.org, our Pride Center in San Mateo County, for more details. I'm proud to be here and thank you so much for proclaiming June as Pride Month.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner, and comments from my colleagues?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember DJ Avani, go.
Yeah, sorry about this. I was pretty passionate. So when David Canepa, as we all know, when he was mayor, he was the very first city. We went down to the city of San Mateo, and he was the first one to declare the LGBTQ2 at the time, I believe. Wasn't it, Craig? And they had it down in the city of San Mateo. And so that was very prideful. So we had not had anything since that time. So to see this today, to reset this tone of inclusiveness in our city is ever so important, especially during these times, many things that are going on that are unacceptable. So I'm very happy, and thank you, Craig, and to your husband, and to all the commissioners. You guys have done amazing things, and when you opened up the Pride Center in the city of San Mateo with our Daily City partnership being there, to let people know that you're there. And we need to do more to support in that manner. And this is definitely setting the right tone for our city, where we really put ourselves on inclusiveness for everyone in the city. So thank you very much, and thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, our councilmember. Mr. Buenaventura?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Craig, for being on here and for your comments. It actually got me thinking that, you know, maybe, and I know we can't take any action because this is just a presentation, but my thought is, when you were talking, is maybe it's time that we in Daily City posted a flag of the rainbow flag. And I'm wondering, how was that, was that done in San Mateo? And, I don't know, could you tell us a little bit about that?
So, Jocelyn, are you gonna?
Yes, sure. Yeah, sure, Commissioner Craig, thank you very much. If I may, Councilmember Ray Vida Ventura, thank you. You know, it was really great to hear from one of the commissioners from the county that reached out to me and said if Daily City would be able to have a proclamation and also be able to raise the flag in the city of Daily City. With no hesitation, you know, reached out to the mayor to have this proclamation on. But I, you know, with that, what the proclamation entails is having actually the very first time in the city of Daily City, the raising of exactly the pride flag. And this is a testament of even through COVID-19, we are shining as a community together and that exactly inclusiveness and that there should always be welcoming and never a shunning and never any of that in our community. I'm so proud that you've been here for three decades and here to represent in our community, Commissioner Craig. And as a local, ever since eight years old, you know, this community has always been diverse in all forms. So this is like an exciting month ahead. We have residents, we have workers that we will all unite together. So thank you, and Councilmember Ray Vida Ventura, we have an exciting thing ahead of us in June. So if that answers your question, thank you so much.
Yes, I didn't realize that that was already in motion, so thank you, Vice Mayor Manalo. I think that's a great, great idea. And I think that with your coordination and your effort, that we can have a grand event and we can have a really nice ceremony inviting the community. And I thank you for taking the lead and making sure that this happens, so thank you.
So, Councilmembers, if I could just share briefly, we had a community conversation at Daily City's high school. And before the conversation, we unfurled a rainbow flag outside of the school. We had around 14 people show up to that meeting just because they saw the flag, including kids that told us they had never seen before in Daily City. And they were so touched that their school was reaching out to them that way. It's a small thing, raising a flag for one day, but it means so much. Thank you.
Okay.
May I say?
Sure.
May I share as well?
Please.
Thank you, Commissioner Weisner, too, for your presentation. I just want to say thank you for making this happen because a lot of times, we always kind of think of love as defined in one way. But love is defined in so many different ways and so many different identities in terms of being, you know, transsexual to trans to different ways of how you want to define your gender. So I just want to say thank you in terms of telling our Daily City community that love comes in different forms, and we accept that. And that's us. That's what it's supposed to be in changing. You know, sometimes what we see is normal, sometimes oppressive, and we need to change the new normal. And this symbol of raising the flag also creates this notion of like, we see you. It's not like we should be hiding, we should be in the closet, but to celebrate yourself, celebrate what love is, celebrate what, you know, I guess what the, what's his name? One of my academics, he said something like, "Justice is what love looks like in public." Right? And that's what we're trying to do, is to bring that type of, that feeling of, this is what justice looks like, and this is what justice looks like in public. Oh, Cornel West said that.
Cornel.
Yes. Thanks, Vice Mayor. Yeah, so thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Commissioner Craig, I didn't know you were around here in Daily City, especially over three decades. And a little history about myself, you know, I used to work at the San Francisco Police Department. I retired as a police officer there. And I remember I started the academy the same week that Harvey Milk and Moscone were assassinated. And I didn't understand. And coming up through the police department, my beat was the Castro district. And it was at that time when the folks up in the Castro district did not like police. So whenever police were around, they would blow whistles to cause other people to take a look as to look at what they're doing, look at what they're doing. And myself, I've had an alternate lifestyle person, and we drive down in the car, and he would say, "Oh, he's so handsome." And I'd look at him and smile, and I said, "Doesn't she look good, too?" And you know, you gain something from that. And what I gained from that is we are all human, we all bleed red. And we have to respect and love each other, and that's the problem that we have. Now, you, Commissioner, said something today that I really didn't take additional notice of. And Dr. Rod alluded to it in what he said. What about our youth? And imagine, you know, us being older, what we had to go through, and especially coming out. But how do our youth feel? So we have to make it comfortable for them. So hearing that they didn't know what the flag was about, we have raised awareness, and rest assured that Daily City and its diverse culture, we love everyone. Daily City stands united against hate. So thank you for being here and thank you for the history lesson. I thank my colleagues for providing me some additional information. You know, you can get old, but you don't know everything, and very good to hear, sir. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, is there any other comments this evening? Okay, congratulations to, yeah, Councilmember DJ Avani, were you about to say something?
Yeah, thank you. And a prideful day, and looking forward to celebrating in Daily City.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to share with Commissioner Craig, you know, at our last Love Not Hate event, you noticed that our Daily City seal actually, it was in rainbow to represent all types of diversity and also exactly what was mentioned, that, you know, it's about love and not hate. And so that was initiated through the staff at our last Love Not Hate event, and that was something so special, and you'll see that, and that happened earlier this past year or so, or last year. But so, you know, we definitely, this is long overdue and are happy to celebrate this June with you.
All right. Vice Mayor, that is an excellent point. I don't know if the commissioner saw that seal. Ms. Malby, can you make sure that, see, he's nodding his head? No. Let's give him that seal, and Vice Mayor is absolutely correct. I'm so proud to see our Daily City seal in the rainbow color. So your staff who put that together, Ms. Malby, again, it comes back around, they ought to be commended. Thank you so much. Okay, great. All right, so we'll move on. The next item, thank you again, Commissioner Craig. Okay, the next item is the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of April 27, 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes.
There's actually one more thing on the item.
Oh, my goodness. How can I forget Chief Bravo? He's been waiting there so patiently. Okay, all right, I'm sorry. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, next item on, next item on the agenda is proclaiming May 4, 2020 as International Firefighters Day. And we have Deputy Chief Ron Bravo of the North County Fire Authority. Chief, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And first and foremost, great words of encouragement and wisdom as it relates to all city staff. It's great to see a great team coming together to celebrate everybody in the city as well as all the employees. So May 4 was basically a commemoration of, to honor the national, it's part of National Fallen Firefighters Foundation as well as the International Firefighters Day. It kind of stems from those that have lost their lives in the line of duty in 2001 when the attack on 9/11. So that stemmed the Fallen Firefighters Foundation. And basically, it's a worldwide effort to honor those that have died in the line of duty fighting fire. But it's also to recognize those that are out on the forefront, dealing with all the things that have come their way on a day-to-day basis. And most recently, it just happened to fall on the 4th, which is right in the middle of the pandemic, which firefighters throughout the world are on the front lines with many other first responders, including police officers. All the essential employees throughout the world that are battling. So first and foremost, thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize those that have suffered and have that sustained loss, and also wanted to thank you for recognizing our employees for all the efforts they do. And we do truly appreciate being honored and feel humbled to be part of a city that loves all their employees and shows the recognition for all their employees. So thank you again, and all the city staff and our partners in dealing with what we're dealing with. We thank you for your cooperation, because if we didn't do it, we'd got a lot of support. So much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I'm glad you're here this evening. Do we have any comments from my colleagues?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember DJ Avani, please.
Yes, thank you, Chief Bravo. At North County Fire, we all have a lot to be proud of. I know things have been pretty limited. You guys never complain about anything. You just do your job, and that's what firefighters do, especially during this time when you have to go straight back into quarantine, but you're still in the community. You're very visible and always there for accessibility, whether it's versus week or community events or wherever. You're the heartbeat of our community along with our police, and you're there for us whenever we ask. You're there for the residents, no questions asked, and you just do your job and well-deserved and very powerful and enjoy that we can have a safe community and because we know that when we call you, you answer the call. And sadly, you know, we are exposing our firefighters and first responders to something that they've never been exposed before. And you guys have done a great job by protecting the ones that we have up here in North County Fire. So I appreciate that as well, and everything you do, and the sacrifice that you make with your families and yourselves. So it's an honor to have you served here in Daily City. You think you can choose in Daily City. And for the rest of our firefighters who we love so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DJ Avani. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please do, Vice Mayor.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much to all the firefighters being on the front lines before and now during the pandemic. You have all been there for our communities before this, and even more so now. You know, when I heard that the Daily City Firefighters Association donated over 800 hours of PTO to the city in case employees didn't have enough sick time, that was...
That was truly heartwarming to see. And that is just an extension of what you all do. Um, and when there was a need for, um, gowns to our community hospital, you know, you provided 500 gowns in support of that. And even yesterday, uh, without being asked, cooked adobo for the community feed. I mean, each and every one of you have shown your dedication and love. And we extend, you know, um, blessings and light to your families when you're away from them. And we know how committed each and every one of you are. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, there it goes again. All my ideas were taken, but I'm glad the Vice Mayor is there because what I'll forget, she, uh, she doesn't. Uh, well, especially, uh, I, when I heard about the eight hundred hours, I thought of something that Congresswoman Jackie Speer had said on a call one day. I'm not to say that we are very prosperous, but she made the term shared prosperity. And what the firefighters did to gather together and say, we're going to give eight hundred hours of PTO time, our own time to help someone else, uh, they weren't forced to do that. And, uh, you know, I'm sure the, the city can use it. I'm very appreciative that the idea came up, but the mere fact it was never asked for. Thank you to the firefighters for even thinking of this. Number two, uh, please let your staff know I have that pot because I want to make sure that that pot is returned to, uh, fire. My wife said to me, well, I can't clean it. Uh, our sink is too small. So we'll hose it down outside and, but know that your pot is safe and we have your pot. You know, that pot sat on the table and that table practically, practically collapsed yesterday, but just some of the juices came out, but we saved that pot. That was enough to feed over 50 people. So thank you. And I've always said the term, uh, you know, you guys are in the firehouse and I'm sure, uh, you folks can burn. In other words, you can cook. I was deeply surprised to see that big old pot of chicken adobo come and it took two people to carry it in. So thank you so much, Chief. This is very much appreciated. Okay. Great. Anyone else before we move on?
I'll say something.
Oh, Dr. Rod, please.
Um, Chief Bravo, again, thank you for all the, all the work that y'all do for the community. I just want to echo everything I said for everybody else, like, um, we never get to say it, um, enough, but thank you. And we really appreciate all the work that, that you put, um, putting your lives on the line like everybody else and serving our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. And again, thank you, Chief, and thank all my colleagues, uh, and, uh, firefighters, everyone here. I mean, this is definitely a family here in Daily City and I'm happy to be a part and I'm sure we all are as well. Cause it shows. Okay, uh, Vice Mayor, I'm going to move on. Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of April 27th. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the minutes.
We got the first, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Second, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Did we get everyone? Okay. Hopefully I didn't miss anyone. All right. The next item is the approval of the agenda for tonight. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. And, uh, we have, uh, looks like one, two, three, four, four items on the consent agenda. Uh, uh, looks like a couple of resolutions as well. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda. If any council members would like to pull any items, uh, please let me know. So, uh, is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay. So move to approve the items on the consent agenda. And, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Rod. Let me see. All right. Uh, first and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Thank you. Uh, all items on the consent agenda has been approved. Next item is item number eight, and that's, uh, use permit UPR dash nine dash one nine dash one four two zero nine. Uh, design review restaurant with a drive-through at Three Ceramanti Center. And I'll turn that over to staff, Ms. Morales, please. Welcome, welcome, Ms. Morales.
Uh, presenting a brief presentation on, um, an item that was at the city council meeting, um, yesterday. Or sorry, uh, last, last council meeting.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to check that I'm not on mute. Okay. Um, so, uh, as the mayor has said, um, this presentation is on, uh, a restaurant with a drive-through, um, located at Three Ceramanti Center. Um, is, uh, considered building 600. It's one out of two drive-through restaurants, um, on this side of the property. And I'll briefly go over the project as well as some, um, information regarding the environmental review. And then what, a brief discussion of what happened at the city council meeting. So, um, just to go over, this is a 5,000 square foot restaurant with a drive-through. Um, it has a 20 car double lane drive-through as well as an interior children's play area and an outdoor patio area. Um, it's proposed to operate Monday through Saturday, 6:00 AM till 11:00 PM. Um, it will have a double shift or a double amount of, um, employees on its peak hour shifts. Um, and half the amount, um, during off-peak hours. Um, and as I mentioned, it is one of two drive-through restaurants proposed, um, within a, a new, newly created parking lot with 177 spaces. Um, the other drive-through was approved in the last city council meeting. So here's your site plan showing, um, the two proposed drive-throughs. We are speaking on the one, um, on the bottom, which is on east of the, uh, right next to the I-280 freeway. Um, and this shows a rendering of the two, uh, proposed drive-throughs next to each other in the, in the parking lot. And here is a floor plan, uh, showing the general layout of, uh, what the proposed building will have. And here are a couple of elevations, um, showing the proposed, um, exterior design. Um, so for this specific, uh, drive-through, there was a queuing and circulation analysis, um, prepared. Um, and it concluded that the overall peak hour, um, overflow would be accommodated, um, with minimal impact to onsite circulation. Um, is expected to have no impact on site access. Um, and the only recommendation in the analysis was that there be a recommend, there be a floating menu and/or ordering staff, which the, um, uh, the tenant would, uh, would, uh, feature in their drive-through restaurant. Um, and just a couple of features of the drive-through system. Um, it is, like I said, a 20 car double lane drive-through, um, with a bypass lane, which allows for customers with smaller orders to bypass, um, other customers with larger orders, just to facilitate the queue. Um, they will be, um, integrating a face-to-face ordering iPad system, sort of like what they have at the In-N-Out, um, just up the street. Um, and overall, um, staff, uh, would be monitoring the queue and directing traffic as necessary to ensure there were no, um, vehicle queuing and circulation issues in the parking lot. Um, as for the environmental assessment, um, staff, um, and the planning commission then has determined that the, um, the project is exempt, is category exempt, um, from CEQA pursuant to class 32, section 15, 332, um, in field development projects. Um, as for the discussion, um, at the April 27th city council meeting, um, generally the city council expressed concerns, um, over the future tenant. And they wanted to provide the applicant with some additional time to provide additional information. Um, the council members also had some questions regarding the floor plan, the existing farmer's market, um, and potential traffic impacts, which were, um, responded to by both the applicant, um, and the, and staff. Um, here is a summary of the findings as outlined in the staff report. And in conclusion, the planning commission recommends that the city council take the following actions, which is to adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report, affirm the environmental assessment, and approve use permit UPR 919 14209 and design review DR 919 14210, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. Uh, that concludes my presentation, uh, but I'm available if you have any questions. Um, and I believe the applicant and their team are also on in the Zoom meeting to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you, Ms. Morales. Uh, at this particular time, uh, again, thank you for your report and update. And what I like to do is, um, excuse me, give the applicant an opportunity to, uh, uh, respond, uh, if the report is accurate as what we have thus far. And, uh, we can ask questions from, uh, my colleagues. Anyone? Okay. Uh, I guess, uh, what I would do now is open it up to questions from my fellow colleagues. And, uh, if the applicant wishes to address them, uh, we can do so.
Yes, um, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, Mr. Buena Ventura, please.
Thank you. Um, yeah. So at the last meeting, I had moved to, um, continue this item to a date certain, which is tonight. Uh, because I had some concerns, um, uh, on two levels. Um, one is the issue of the transparency and the, um, really the, the, the unknown of, of who this, uh, potential tenant would be, even though I think we all, uh, can reasonably speculate that we're talking about a Chick-fil-A. And so, um, that was my first concern about, um, um, the transparency and, and, um, wanting to know, uh, if that can be somehow resolved. And then secondly, my concern was whether or not, if we assume, uh, that this is a Chick-fil-A and I'm making that assumption based on everything that I've read, I've seen, I've heard, that it is going to be a Chick-fil-A. And so my concern was the issue of, there has been a lot of talk in the news, at least previously, that Chick-fil-A has supported, uh, organizations that, uh, discriminate against the LGBTQ community. And so, um, I, I had some real issues with that because, number one, because of the transparency issue. And number two, because, um, it's, it's seems to be about an organization that has a history of discrimination or supporting, um, organizations that are against the LGBTQ community. So I'd like to hear a response to this to both of those and, uh, see if, if we can somehow resolve the issue. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Buena Ventura. Any of my colleagues have any questions? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to pose a couple of questions as well. Uh, on the information that we have received, uh, I'm thinking in the area of conditions. Conditions being that even though we have a traffic queue-up analysis, I'm wondering, number one, if the same company did the analysis for the other drive-up, uh, project that we approved. That's number one. Number two, I do understand that this particular drive-up is much, much larger than the other, uh, project. And, uh, I just want to know, uh, how accurate is that traffic analysis? Granted, I'm sure we wouldn't have a problem on Sunday because, uh, they would be closed, but I'm concerned about during the weekdays as well. So that's the other question that I have. And, um, those are my main concerns at this particular time. So that's all I have at this time, based upon what I hear tonight. Um, that's all I have. Okay. A- anyone else before we have, uh, Ms. Morales respond? Okay, Ms. Morales, uh, you have the floor. I see Ms. Allison Werner here is on the line, who's representing Regency. And, uh, if either one of you can respond to some of those questions proposed, we would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, I can respond to, uh, the mayor's questions regarding the analyses, uh, the queuing analyses. Um, so I did confirm that the, um, the two queuing analyses, um, for the two drive-throughs were, um, prepared by the same, um, consultant. Um, however, um, responding to, um, if there, if we should, uh, have any concern regarding, uh, the validity of the, the reports. Um, we do require, as the planning division, we do require that they be a third party. Um, so there should not be any association to the, the potential tenants. Um, so we, we do expect, um, we do expect that from the consultant and from the applicant. Um, I'm hoping, I'm not sure if that completely answers your question, uh, Mayor. Um, but if you'd like to elaborate further, I'd be the answer.
Uh, thank you so much, Ms. Morales. Uh, that helps tremendously. Uh, I'm just concerned about the validity, uh, now that we know that the same consultant did it for both. And whether that was taken into consideration. Uh, and if the consultant can provide us that information or explain it to us, because it's a little complicated to me. And, uh, that would help as well. Okay. Uh, how about, um, Councilmember Buena Ventura's question?
Um, yes. Hi, this is Allison Warner for Regency Centers. I just want to confirm I've fully taken myself off mute and everyone can hear me.
Yes, we sure can. Thank you so much, Warner, for being on board. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Um, thank you for having me, Mayor and, uh, Vice Mayor and council members. And we're definitely happy to be back here tonight and we're excited about the opportunity to sort of round out our entire redevelopment plan at Ceramanti. And, um, hope that approval of this request tonight helps us, um, polish off what we're very excited about at Ceramanti to bring, you know, a whole collection of new uses out there. Um, you know, as you can see in the staff report and in, uh, this Morales's presentation, um, some additional information has been provided. Um, as to the traffic consultants, I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask, were you asking a follow-up question specific to the traffic consultant just now? Um, or was your answer, was your question fully answered? I just want to confirm before I move on.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Warner. Um, I do see, uh, a couple of folks on board, uh, who's listening in. Uh, Keith Gilbert and Andrew Cusson, uh, can we, uh, can someone identify who those folks are? Because obviously they're on the call and able to make, uh, comments.
Yeah, I do happen to, Andrew Cusson is my associate at Regency Centers. He works closely with me on the development. Um, and Keith Gilbert is a representative of the tenant, uh, the, the likely proposed tenants for building 600. Um, unfortunately, the traffic consultant was not able to make the meeting tonight. Um, so that's why I wanted to confirm if your question around traffic was fully answered and if, um, and just clarify if I could help answer that at all before moving on.
Okay. Um, great. Thank you.
Um.
Go ahead.
So in regard, um, to council members, Ray, um, Ray Buena Ventura's question, if you wouldn't mind, um, clip for kind of further clarifying the two different questions. And I can help answer one and, and the potential tenant could possibly help answer the second.
Yeah. So the first question is the issue of transparency. And, um, whether or not, um, we can fully, uh, have a robust discussion on which tenant we're talking about and whether or not, um, we can make it clear to the public and the community that this is about talking about a Chick-fil-A and whether or not, um, that can be, we, 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 we don't have to hide behind the ball here. And we can just fully, um, acknowledge that that's what's happening. So that we can then go on to the second part of my question, which is if it is the Chick-fil-A. if it is the Chick-fil-A, I want to know what they have done to resolve the issue of discrimination in their operation of their business, and whether or not they have supported organizations that support discriminating against the LGBT community.
Okay, great. Thank you. So to answer the first question, both the CUP that was approved at the last meeting, as well as the CUP that requesting at this meeting, the application is for a youth permit for a drive-through restaurant at this meeting. And I would like to say that we've had significant amount of interest from many tenants over the past year, one of which does include Chick-fil-A, and at the moment, they are the most likely potential tenant, given their demand and traffic that they drive, which is very similar to In-N-Out. Essentially, when site planning and planning for who the user might ultimately be, going the direction of what's going to have the most impact on the site, and having that studied by the traffic engineer and site planning is definitely most the current conservative approach from our perspective. So if in the end, it didn't end up being a Chick-fil-A, we know that someone that might have less traffic demand would still ultimately fit there. I say potential tenant only in that oftentimes we don't have fully executed non-contingent leases when we are requesting entitlement. And so in the event that this gets approved, something happens like COVID-19 shelter in place, or who knows down the road, and the most likely tenant ends up backing out. We aren't overly committed to anyone, but at the end of the day, we've appropriately planned traffic, site planning. The building is definitely a prototype that can be used with other uses. Since we did take that direction of planning for kind of the most kind of the most conservative approach from that perspective, we did ask that representative from Chick-fil-A join us tonight, Keith Gilbert. And so I would turn over your second question to Keith, so that he could help clarify any further questions in that regard.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. Okay, we'll stand by.
Hi, this is Keith Gilbert. Can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can, Mr. Gilbert. Welcome. Thank you for spending some time to be with us this evening.
Thank you for having us. To answer your question, Councilmember Buena Ventura, I think I'd like to answer in two parts. One, as a business, we remain focused on really providing good food, good service, and a great place for hospitality. And we really strive to be a welcoming place for everyone. And what I would like to say is that I can really mostly speak to my experience being with Chick-fil-A. I've been with Chick-fil-A for eight years, and I have seen nothing in all of my time there, anything but a welcoming place that's very hospitable to everyone. And so as a company, we really strive to not be for or against any group. And in terms of our giving, our giving is really focused on two fronts, youth and education. And so our main focus and how we give through youth and education would be through Junior Achievement. It's one of the people that we contribute to, and then also Covenant House. And so those are the main focuses that we give back to the community.
Okay. Mr. Gilbert, you still there?
I am. I'm sorry. Was there any other questions for me?
Yeah, great. Mr. Buena Ventura, did that answer?
No, that didn't answer my question. My question was, does Chick-fil-A or did Chick-fil-A engage in discriminatory, what I perceive as discriminatory practice by supporting organizations either now or in the past that supported discrimination against LGBT community? So because the concern that I have is I've heard in news outlets, talking to community members, who have said that Chick-fil-A has donated money to certain groups that have supported things like programming of trying to change the members of the LGBT community through programming. And that's the kind of concern that I have. And I want an answer to whether or not either that they have done that in the past, are they continuing to do it now? Or what's the plan that Chick-fil-A has to address that issue? Because I'm sure it has come up. I'm not the first one to bring this up, and that's what I want some answers to.
Well, I could answer that where our giving is currently, which is what I mentioned before, that we give to Junior Achievement and to Covenant House. And there is no political agenda with anything that we do in terms of giving in the past or currently. Our agenda truly is on helping the youth education, and then also, we also focus a lot on homelessness. And a lot of that occurs at the local level. So each of our operators also are very tied into the community and are looking at ways to serve that community in which they work. Each store typically, or each store is operated with one operator, and they're invested in that community. And so in terms of answering your question, I can only speak from my experience and what I've seen, not from any media or anything else. And I can absolutely tell you that I've never seen anything to believe that we don't treat anyone without honor, dignity, and respect, and try to be inclusive and hospitable towards everyone.
Well, I know you tried to answer that question, but to me, it's not been answered. So I respect and I can accept your answer that Chick-fil-A does not in and of itself as an organization discriminate, maybe, you know, in the restaurant, in their employees, or whatever. I think I'm not concerned about that, because I don't have any evidence of that, and I've not heard of that. What I have heard is that your organization has supported in the past groups that have discriminated against LGBT members, like this programming thing that I mentioned. So all I need to know is, has that been resolved? And is there a commitment not to do that again? It's very simple. I'm not trying to skirt the issue. I don't want you to skirt it. I want a direct answer about past practices and whether or not future practices is going to change. And so I appreciate that Chick-fil-A appears to be a good employer, but you also have an impact in the community. And if you are donating to organizations that do discriminate, I need to know that that's not going to happen again. It's been resolved.
What I can tell you is that we are giving to youth, education, and homelessness, and we're not focused on any kind of political agenda. And we won't be focused on a political agenda. What we're focused on is providing good food and good service. And so the assurance that you're seeking from us is that we're not going to do something that I'm not even aware that we've ever done. But I can tell you that those are the things that we will continue to focus on in the future, helping youth, education, and homelessness.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Councilmember Buena Ventura, before we move on, are there any other questions from other council members? Okay, hearing none. Vice Mayor? All right, hearing none at this time.
Yeah, no, this question, I mean, I think it's along the same lines of Councilmember Ray Buena Ventura. It's just understanding, you know, if there is a change on the donation practices that have included, you know, controversial stance on discrimination with LGBTQ community. So is there any way that, you know, is there no longer support for those organizations that have been mentioned? There was stating that in the similar fashion that there has been a news release in November of 2019 that, you know, there's no longer support for organizations like so. So I just want to understand, and I think that's what Councilmember Buena Ventura is alluding to. And is, you know, has there been a change to your donation policy in that regard?
I would say that we're constantly refocusing our giving and to make sure that we're staying away from anything that can be misconstrued as giving to something that would be seen as anti-LGBT. And so we're constantly evaluating that and trying to make sure that we're, we really want to stay out of any kind of political agenda. So I would say that to answer your question, we're constantly reevaluating to make sure that we stay out of that political realm. We don't want to be in it. We want to be focused on our customers and providing those services that I had mentioned previously.
Okay. Any further comments? Right, Mr. Gilbert, a comment that I have, and I'll make this perfectly clear. First of all, most of the folks know me. I won't turn down a meal, and especially if it's good. And I've heard about Chick-fil-A. I've never had it, but folks talk about it all the time. And to hear that possibility that we may be getting one, I'm definitely all for it. But at the same time, we have to worry about our constituents here in Daly City. And we, as council, would have to go back to them. You know, there's going to be some naysayers, but we have to basically explain our position, given the past, from what Chick-fil-A has done before in the past. Now, while we were on this conference call, I went back and did a search, and I found something dated November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, which was not too long ago. And it says Chick-fil-A's many controversies explained. But as I continued to read the article, it says LGBTQ rights groups like GLAD, G-L-A-A-D, say Monday's news is a step in the right direction for Chick-fil-A, though they warn that the chain is still far from inclusive. So basically, they are cautiously optimistic about the change. And I feel that that's something than to rather say no, but it is a step in the right direction. And you, sir, have made it, you have given it some thought, it sounds like. And you said youth education, and that as we move forward, you really don't want to be involved into such political items of a hot nature or sensitive nature. But you need to rest assured, we as a council, we care about our constituents here in Daly City. And if this was to go through tonight, we need to know and that we would have support from Chick-fil-A, that we have concerns. And, you know, I understand that this is only land use agreement at this particular time. I want to bring up the issue about In-N-Out. In-N-Out, that's why I inquired about the traffic consultant. In-N-Out, we have a problem. And over on, was it Sullivan? That In-N-Out, I mean, traffic is horrendous, especially given the stay-in-place order. It's gotten worse. People commit violations of the law when it comes to making a right turn at the corner. You'll probably have to wait a half hour to get to the corner to make that right turn. And what's being done about it? Nothing. And the conditions still exist. Weather will be at the same as Ceremony. That's why I posed the question earlier. So I'm looking for some sort of guarantee that Chick-fil-A, and first of all, thank you for coming on board and stating that you are the applicant, that Chick-fil-A will do everything they will in their power. So also, we have monitoring that will be going on. They will do everything in their power to mitigate any traffic concerns as well. So that's all I have at this time.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, very briefly, this is Richard in Public Works, and the engineering department within Public Works, they do review all the traffic studies as well as the queuing analysis that was done. And so our traffic engineer did review the queuing analysis for these restaurants. And basically, for the most part, they check out, find if there's a high peak, there's potential of blocking some of the parking spaces on the site. But then that's kind of what the condition of approval or one of the findings is in terms of them having that moving ordering system. And so if that's complied with, it should be sufficient in regards to the queues and not cause any negative impact to the city streets.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chu. That helps. That puts me at ease a little bit more. I'm just wondering that the same folks did the traffic for In-N-Out over on Sullivan.
Yeah, I don't know that. In-N-Out has been there for quite some time. I do know that we did look at the queuing for the new In-N-Out on Geller, and that seems to have worked out pretty well. Keep in mind, you know, those analysis were done pre-pandemic. And so these are times that no one's really experienced before. But in typical situations, it wouldn't be sufficient so long as they do the mobile ordering system during the peak times.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chu. That helps tremendously. Okay, are there any? Yes, Dr. Rod?
I just want to just ask Mr. Gilbert, like, why Daly City? When you know it's like right next to San Francisco, this is like the mothership of Harvey Milk. We're talking about the queer rights movement, and we know the given history of Chick-fil-A. A wise person told me that you could tell if a person's authentic between what they say and what they do. And if you could align those two, then they're being authentic. Why Daly City? Right? Because this is a community. We just passed through the thing for Pride Month in June. Like, I don't, I just feel really reluctant in terms of understanding. Like, I don't, I just, I just feel really reluctant in terms of understanding, like, why Daly City?
This is Keith Gilbert. I would say, one of the things I'm excited about with Daly City is the opportunity to come into a city that doesn't have a lot of familiarity with Chick-fil-A. For you guys, for everyone there to experience the hospitality and the service that, that you will experience when you go there. And then it'll open up everyone's eyes to see who we truly are. And there's definitely a lot of people in that community, I think, that are going to be really pleasantly surprised when they start to experience the service and the quality of food that they're going to get at a Chick-fil-A.
So, I get it, you know, I grew up in Southern California. People talk about it all the time. How do you respond to all the different local measures in terms of, of not having Chick-fil-A in their local municipalities? I know San Antonio had issues, I know y'all had it too. You tried to open a business in England, it got shut down within like eight weeks. How do you respond to these things? Like, like, why would we want to have a Chick-fil-A when you, there's a back record of that?
I would say there's a lot of context to a lot of those things that you just mentioned. And more often than not, cities are, are excited to have us there. It's rare to have cities that don't want us, when they see the jobs that we create and the opportunities to have quality food quickly. I think that there's more to the stories in terms of the, the England one, in terms of trademarking and stuff that we were involved in. But more, more importantly, I think we're, we're excited about Daly City. We know it's a family-oriented city, and for us, that's us as well. We're focused on families. And so I think that's the most important thing for us to, that we're just really excited to be there and have that opportunity to serve your community.
Dr. Rod and councilmembers and Keith, if you don't mind, if I jump in. Part of the process that we've been going through with Chick-fil-A and learning about them is better understanding. When they come into a community and learn about it, they do do a lot of giving to the local community and the local organizations that are, you know, very specific to the, the community that they're in. They also, I've learned, have given a lot of college scholarships to their employees, so they support their employees and their growth as well. And so those are just a couple other tidbits that I think help paint the larger picture of who Chick-fil-A is, not only as a good operator who produces good food, but they really do give back to the communities that they come into.
If I may, oh, Dr. Rod, did you have more? Okay, thank you so much. I just wish everyone had this article in front of them, because I continue to read it. And Drew Anderson, who's the Director of Campaigns and Rapid Response for GLAD, says that in addition to refraining from financially supporting anti-LGBTQ organization, Chick-fil-A still lacks policies to ensure a safe workplace for LGBTQ employees. Now, it goes on to say that Chick-fil-A has promised to cut ties with anti-LGBTQ charities before. And, you know, I, I, I'm trying to be optimistic here. And I, I think, hearing Mr. Gilbert, what he said tonight also, and Ms. Werner, that I, I think they would be a good, a good tenant. And besides providing a good product, they are, they would be here to help support our community, which I think is very, very important. But again, we're making a strong standing that here in Daly City, we don't tolerate the discrimination of anyone, whether, you know, race, creed, sex, or sexual, sexual orientation. Is, that's what Daly City is about, and I would hope that we would gain that support and that it is instilled with any tenant that comes in to Daly City. So basically, that's my thought. You know, maybe some council members may be a little bit uncomfortable, but believe me, you know, we as a team, we will fight to make sure that there's no discrimination against anyone. And I think, I'm just optimistic that we can work this out. Yes, Councilmember Dejavani.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt. Yeah, I'd like to ask the gentleman, usually in companies, maybe city attorney as well, do they usually have policies written up on anti-discrimination or things of that nature? Of corporate policies? Is there something in the corporation that is written in writing, you know, like, making sure that, that these, you know, where people take stands of things? I know we have certain laws, of course, that protect it, for their civil rights and that. But usually, corporations usually take a part of themselves, and they're separate. Like, our city has extra policies in place to ensure that about discrimination against our, along with law. But is there anything else, or Rose, would you know, or, or the gentleman from Chick-fil-A, do you guys have anything written in your corporate structure saying that you don't, you don't tolerate discrimination against anyone, or?
This is Keith Gilbert. I'm not aware of anything specifically as a policy, other than it's illegal for us to discriminate. And I could say, I would say that, you know, we've been in the Bay Area for a while now as well. We have 16 restaurants already there, and there's never been any history of discrimination in any of those. But I, I think, more importantly, we, I think, we want to have this opportunity to gain everyone on this call's trust, and just show that we're an inclusive company and we don't discriminate. And I've, and like I said, from my own personal experience, I've never seen any kind of discrimination within Chick-fil-A, the exact opposite.
Thank you. Then my second question is, even though we don't have any, really have any say-so over this, but how Chick-fil-A's policy concerning wherever they go, or wherever they construct, concerning labor, labor unions?
We don't have a, we don't have a specific policy. We do, we construct using union labor or non-union. We don't have a requirement for one or the other.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Dejavani. As councilmember was speaking, I, I did a search, and I was looking that Chick-fil-A exists in nine counties. Alameda, Contra Costa, Marin, Napa, San Francisco, San Mateo, I guess San Mateo refers to the new location in Redwood City, Santa Clara, Solano, and Sonoma Counties. So I just thought I'd put that out there as well. Okay, is there any other questions? Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, that was a question I, I had for the representative from Chick-fil-A, like, what, what other areas? And I think you mentioned it, but what were the other cities that you are in in the Bay Area? As you mentioned, you're in the Bay Area already.
Let Mr. Gilbert answer that while I'm looking for you.
Yeah, we are in Fremont, San Jose, Walnut Creek. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to do it from memory right now. So those are, those are some of the cities that we're in.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions for the applicant, Ms. Werner, or Ms. Morales?
I do have a question for Ms. Werner. The, what, the anticipation of the use of labor for the project? Just wondering, because it's, is it under the demise of whoever your tenant is? Or would you be the one that would be choosing the construction? Would you be building the construction, or is it the tenant's responsibility to do so? You're on mute. You're on mute. You're on mute, sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Manolo. So with this particular opportunity, we would be delivering a building pad, and just doing the site work. And the ultimate tenant will be coming in with their own construction drawings to build their own buildings. Regency's construction is an open bidding process to all construction companies throughout, throughout the Bay Area.
So would you be reaching out to union, uh, unions, unions around this opportunity? Would you reach out to other?
What I would say is that, as in, in an open shop, we, and we use general contractors that are open shop, they do, they reach out to all parties, union and non-union, and in the Bay Area, union is obviously very prevalent and often the most competitive. And so we do have union construction companies and subcontractors that are part of the project.
Okay, Vice Mayor, do you have further?
Oh, no, thank you.
All right, you know what, that, that just added another twist to things, and I'm going to be very cognizant of that. In Daly City, we cater to a PLA, and I have to defer to the city attorney to see if that can be a condition of this agreement with a, a Regency.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, the condition is regarding PLA?
Yeah, PLA, PLA and the use of union workers in development and construction in the project.
Yes, so Regency is private development. It does so, for the most part, we can't require them to use, have that type of agreement. I know we, in the past, have had a request, and there has been discussions with Ceremony and Regency, but it definitely, since it's private property and not our property, we would not have it as a condition. But I know that in the past, they've had agreements and different various types of, of labor groups at basically Ceremony's agreement and discretion.
Got you. So as Ms. Werner says, I guess it goes out to a bidding process. Unions can tend to be more, but, you know, the, the final decision will be upon them to choose who they want to use.
That's correct.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you so much. Attorney Zimmerman, thank you for that. That predates my time. Can you explain further how there was, you said that there was a discretion on having, was, was there an agreement? And can you explain further how this, why would this be different at this time?
So, um, it didn't, my understanding is the agreement would definitely wasn't with the city necessarily. And I don't know if Ms. Werner was around during that time. But based on my recollection, they had a type of labor prevailing wage labor piece agreement that was an agreement with the trades and the union groups. And that was specifically just separate, that Ceremony engaged in that agreement. So I don't, the city was not privy to it, we were aware of it, but we weren't part of the terms of the agreement. They just advised us, and we were made aware of a labor piece, or not labor piece, I apologize, some type of union labor contract with some of the trades. And this was with the different phases of Ceremony. But it wasn't a condition of any development or a condition of a city requirement. It was something that Ceremony had engaged in.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Zimmerman. Ms. Werner, do you have, I don't know if it predates you at this point, but do you have an update on those agreements and how that's going?
So the, what, what you're referring to predates my time at Regency as well. There, my understanding is that there was an old understanding with the, the local unions, and there was some prevailing labor language that was agreed to as part of past projects. What I will say is that was, you know, Equity One, Regency Centers, like I said, it's an open shop, and we go out to everyone, and we invite everyone to bid on our project. We, we don't, you know, we don't prefer one way or the other.
Thank you.
This message is for city attorney. Oh, boy. If we were to require prevailing wage and PLA, could the city be liable? I know it's a tough question.
Yes, it's, it's a tough question, and I, and honestly, I know there have been situations where their thought was to require it, but I, I don't know how enforceable it would be. And that's the safest answer. Not that you, you can definitely request it, but I, I can't say for a certain what liability would look like. I, I think the enforcement would be probably more the, the concern.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions?
Well, okay, so I'm on the, on the, and I certainly could use the wisdom and the thought of the rest of the council to help me guide through a decision tonight. What I'm hearing from Mr. Gilbert is that they are going to be more selective in who they donate to, which, which is good. But as clear as day it is to me, Chick-fil-A, even according to, as, as you, Mayor, were reading internet news information, I just pulled something up right now, that they have donated to organizations that discriminate against the LGBT community. I just pulled up a CNN business article that talks about their, that Chick-fil-A announced in 2018 that they would no longer donate to a group called the FCA, which is the, is a Christian Fellowship, Christian of Athletes. They gave 1.65 million to them, and they, in 2018, they, they announced that they will no longer be getting, next year, which is 2019, donate, and only they'll, they'll donate to a certain group of charities, and it does not include the Fellowship Christian Athletes, which has, in this article, has taken controversial stance on homosexual. which has, in this article, has taken controversial stance on homosexuality and same-sex marriage. So to me, it's clear that they have in the past. My concern is, number one, I'm just hoping for some clarity on the issue in this phone call. So I was hoping for, I don't even necessarily need an acknowledgement that they did in the past, because I'm, I, I see evidence of that in a reputable news article from CNN. My ask is simply that they state on the record in our meeting before the public that they will no longer donate to organizations that discriminate against the LGBT community. Now, to say that they'll be more selective, that sort of half does it for me, not fully, but maybe half. And I'm finding it difficult to understand why can't, they could probably put this whole issue to rest, at least with me, if they would just say that they're committed to not donating to organizations that discriminate against the LGBT community. So I'm, I'm feeling, like I said, I, I said I'm on the fence. Maybe it's, maybe I need to hear more from my other council members to help me guide through it. But the answers have left me, my glass still half-empty. So that's where I'm at and I'm, I'm, I'm needing some counseling and some advice from my colleagues.
This is, I'm sorry, this is Jennifer Rankham, Land Use Council to Regency. And I appreciate the concerns here and I think that Chick-fil-A has done a good job of expressing their commitment to the community. And, but I also, I want to just make sure that we're reminded here that the issue before you is a conditional use permit for the land and not a tenant. And so I, I just want us to be very aware of, you know, sort of the path that we're heading down. And I can, I can hand it over to Chick-fil-A again. But, but I really do want to reinforce the fact that we're entering into some, some territory that's questionable. So I just wanted to kind of give that reminder to the council.
Well, I will say that I, I'm fully aware of the issue with respect to the use of the land. And I haven't even begun asking my questions about whether or not a drive-through is appropriate for that land use. So we can get into that, but I was hoping that we can resolve this issue because that was the questions that I asked in the first instance. But I'd certainly be willing to go into whether or not a drive-through is the appropriate use of that land.
This is Keith Gilbert. I, I want to try to make it clear for everyone that our intent is to not donate to any group that supports political agendas. I'm not really sure how else to say that and that is our policy, that's our intent, to not support any group with political agendas.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, council member.
Yes. Just to clarify, when they say political, help me out, Mr. Councilmember Buena Ventura. When they say the word political, that's not what we're leaning towards. Like political is like, is that, are we just, we're talking about discrimination, right?
Yeah, the, the clearest, the clearest message and the clearest statement is to just simply commit to, we will not support organizations that discriminate any LGBT, members of the LGBT community. When you say political causes or political organizations, I mean, I suppose that could be subject to interpretation. But you could make it clear as day right now and say, we are not going to support organizations that discriminate against the LGBT community. That's as clear as day for me. And that's where my struggle is because I'm not sure they're willing to make that commitment. And it's me, it's, it's leaving me half-empty, as I said, and that's why I need the guidance of my council, counselors to, to, to tell me if I'm, I don't know, maybe off base here, but I, I need to know what you think.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor, may, may I say something? We have the floor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, earlier in the conversation, I, I asked the representative from Chick-fil-A, you know, around the practices that happened in the past. And, you know, I, I, I had finally heard from him saying that there was no support from the anti-LTQ community. But at this point, I feel like I'm hearing a revert back to just being very general. And I think, you know, along the same lines as Councilmember Buena Ventura, it's, it's just a, a, you know, very clear statement. You know, that is what we're asking for. I think, you know, it's very broad to, to make that statement, but we're, in particular, you know, we're asking exactly what was mentioned from my colleague. And so I'm on that same page and I thought this evening we would be able to hear directly and understand where they are, the organizations at, at this point regarding that issue. So thank you.
This is Keith Gilbert again. I'm sorry if I caused any confusion. I think what I was trying to say is in line with what you guys were asking for and maybe I was using the wrong terms. But to make it clear, we're not looking to support any organization that is anti-LGBT or groups that discriminate.
Okay, there you have it. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Any other comments from council? Okay, don't, don't mind me, I'm still pulling up articles. And I think this has been a lesson learned from what has transpired in the past that folks do not forget. And again, I'm optimistic that we have, we have something good here. And I think as we move forward, we can all learn from each other. The questions posed tonight is very, very productive. And I, I feel we have most of the information that we need to make an informed decision, decision. And I, I, I just think we need to move forward because I'd hate to tie this up for, for down the road in the future. I will say this for a fact, I do have a concern about labor. I'm sure that Chick-fil-A asks for its employees, we do have minimum wage labor laws and that they will comply. In some cases, it may be even better or a little bit higher. So that's the good part. But I'm also concerned about the use of labor in a private development. I don't know how long this would hold up this, as we move forward. We can ask for the condition to be PLA and prevailing wage. But whether it's accepted or whether it's enforceable, that's to be determined, I feel, at a later time. But if you don't ask, you don't get. But I feel that the questions have been answered by Mr. Gilbert. And granted, Mr. Gilbert is representing Chick-fil-A and you know, I have to respect the fact that there's higher corporate folks. And for him to come right out and make a promise to you, I, you know, I think he's putting himself on the line as well. But I do know this, his intent, he's listening, he knows our concerns. And I think moving forward, he will make every opportunity to make sure that at least this location in Daly City, whether it's, it's a different location and how it handles its employees and its donation practices from the franchisee. You know, I think he knows and I have to commend him for that. So with that being said, I'll open it up to further comments from my councils before we take a vote.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I ask one last question? And I know this was responded to earlier by Ms. Warner. But I, I'd like to ask a request. When you do that RFP out to labor, you said it's out to everyone. I'd like to also ensure that, you said you did it to everyone. But can you make sure it goes to our local, local builders and union builders in the area? I know you can cast a wide net and I think it's really important that we support the workers in our community, especially in, through the workforce. So that's extremely important, I know, to myself and so, some of my colleagues on here. And I know you said you cast a wide net, but I think it's just to ensure that you reach the labor community is extremely important to myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any comment, any other comments?
Mayor, do we, is there any public comment on this issue?
Let me see. Yes, we can, we can have a, a public comment. Yes, we can, we haven't gotten to that point yet. Thank you, thank, thank you for that reminder, thank you. I can see Stephen looking. Okay, any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a real quick one. I remember when, I believe somebody was referencing earlier this evening, I think that Councilmember Buena Ventura was on the council at the time when there was a labor issue at Ceremony. I think that the Dave and Buster's was the question at one time. And then there, I don't know if it was that current time where there had been some wage stuff issues. So that's the importance that, that I think that our council in regards to the gentleman from Chick-fil-A and, and Ceremony to, as a friendly reminder, even if, no matter who you hire, you know, wage stuff does happen. And that was a big issue and we don't want this to happen to anyone in our community. Things are really tough enough as people have lost their jobs. And as the Vice Mayor and everyone has alluded that, you know, we need to treat people like fair. As you can see, we're a council in a city that is very strong in those convictions. And what, I want to be reflective in everything we do, especially, you know, our Ceremony, which draws people from everywhere. So that's a reflection on us as well as the council and our community. So I think that, given that, there was a lot of protests on the corner. And we don't want to, we will not, do not want to see that. I still think that would be really good for Ceremony or our city and the employees. But that did happen and I didn't remember the exact year, but I do remember that quite well. But thank you, Mr. Mayor. And then we haven't even discussed the drive-throughs as well.
I'm sorry, council member, we haven't discussed the what, the, the last point, the drive-through?
I needed to discuss the, the drive-through issues.
Okay, did you have a specific question about the drive-through or driving issues? Council member? I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay, I'm fine, thank you.
No, no, I think what she was saying is that we should discuss whether or not this is an appropriate restaurant for the drive-through, to, to have a drive-through restaurant. I think that's what she was trying to say. Is that what you were trying to say, Mr. Giovanni?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura, that's correct, thank you.
Okay, thank, yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just looking at the, the plans. And I was just thinking about the area and I mean, we just approved the, the site to be a drive-through for the Starbucks just nearby. I know this is much bigger than that. And then I was, I was thinking about, you know, the, the COVID crisis and how, you know, drive-throughs are probably going to be an essential part of the community because of the nature of the way we're, we're doing takeout and we need to do, we're not gonna, well, I, I hope we come back to the, the days where we're going to be having sit-down meals. But probably drive-throughs are essential and that's probably an appropriate thing to have in that, in, in, in that area. So that's just my thought. So I, I think, in my mind, I think the issue of the drive-through is resolved as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Buena Ventura, I appreciate that. And Councilmember D. Giovanni for bringing it up as well. You know, it's going to be something called the new social norm. And I think that for Chick-fil-A to basically step up and take a chance, you know, because, I don't know, again, I've never been to a Chick-fil-A, but looking at the diagram, we have seating. And I'm sure that things will have to be modified until folks can feel comfortable again. But I think a, a, a drive-through is something that most of the folks are going to be willing to do when they want to go out and eat. And, you know, just pick up your food and just go. And maybe later on, that will change in a sense, when folks feel comfortable, you know, just like going to Denny's and let's sit down and have some breakfast. So I'm optimistic in that regard as well. All right, I don't want to be thrown off the topic matter here. So we were addressing most of the questions from my colleagues. And I just wanted to be sure that there are no further questions before I ask Mr. Stephen Salti if there are any public comments on this matter. So do we have any other questions at this time? Okay, Mr. Salti, do we have any public comments on this matter?
No public comment.
Be careful what you wish for, huh? All right, thank you so much. All right. Before we move on and take a vote, once again, I'll ask, are there any additional comments from my colleagues? Okay, I would like to add as additional condition that Regency, even though Ms. Warner did make mention, but that it is documented that we obtain a PLA and prevailing wage agreements for, for the employees who work at Chick-fil-A. Whether it can be enforced, I don't know, but I would like that drafted as a condition in the language as well. So on the, on the item, use permit UPR-9-19-1429, a restaurant drive-through at number three Ceremony with the additional condition that both Chick-fil-A and Regency Centers, as how you have it, will deeply consider a PLA and a PWA with the workers at Chick-fil-A. Does that sound appropriate?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yeah. Ms. Warner, I, I see a perplexed look on your face, but anyway, go ahead, tell me your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I wasn't sure of the appropriate way to, to jump in here. I just want to say that the conditions I've written and proposed by staff are fully agreeable by Regency. And while I understand the concern, I, I will say we will definitely consider that. um, while I understand, um, the concern, um, I, I will say we will definitely consider that as we always do. Um, and that is part of an open bidding process as we consider all contractors to come in and, um, bid on the project. Um, so, uh, to, to consider it is certainly acceptable. Unfortunately, as a requirement, um, that would be, um, untenable for the project, but we definitely always consider it and we're very, um, proud of our, of our open shop practices at Regency Center.
I appreciate that, Ms. Warner. And along those lines, uh, uh, local, uh, if possible, would you consider that local, local work?
What I would say is when we go out, um, for RFP on all projects, be it small inside the mall or large, we always go local. Um, and, and, you know, we, we go beyond that if we have to. It's a very competitive construction market. Everyone is very busy. Um, but we do try to get local as well.
I got you. I appreciate that. I just don't want folks, uh, coming in for a job from Florida or, uh, New York. We want to try to keep us locals. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Uh, so. Yes, so that's my motion to council. I'll make the motion, uh, as stated above. And, um, we'll need a second. All right, let's not all speak up at once. Does anybody want to modify the motion or did I cover everything, the concerns?
I'll second it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Buena Ventura. Okay, any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, would you kindly call, uh, roll, please?
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Hi.
Ms. Manalo?
Hi.
Dr. Rod?
I abstain.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Hi.
Mr. Sylvester?
Hi. Okay, so that's a vote of, uh, for the one. I thank you so much, everyone. Uh, thank you for your participation and, thank you for all your, uh, productive answers and, um, we'll go from here. Ms. Warner and all the staff, uh, Mr. Gilbert, uh, I see, uh, Ms. Jennifer Raine, thank you also for being online as well in this process. Okay, so with that being said, we'll move on. Thank you. Okay, with that being said, we'll move on to the next item, which is a resolution. Resolution of the City Council of Daly City declaring continued existence of a local emergency in the city of Daly City. And I'll turn that over to, uh, Ms. Moppy.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Can you all hear me clearly?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. So tonight it is recommended that the City Council adopt a resolution declaring the continued existence of a local emergency regarding the, uh, COVID-19 threat. As you know, on March 4th, 2020, the governor proclaimed a statewide emergency. And on March 16th, 2020, the City of Daly City City Council also declared the existence of a local emergency in the city of Daly City. Um, on April 25th, the San Mateo County Director of Emergency Services extended the shelter in place, also known as the SIP or the SIP, uh, through June 1st, 2020. Uh, the city is following all recommendations from San Mateo County Health Officer and remains in constant communication with the county, state, and federal officials to monitor and respond to any updates. Under Government Code Section 8630, a local emergency may be declared by the City Council by a four-fifths vote. The fiscal impact, um, through the action of declaring the need for continuing local state of emergency, the city may be able to receive mutual aid resources from the state of California to assist in response to, um, and containment of the spread of COVID-19. And City of Daly City would be eligible for cost recovery funds related to the local emergency should we declare this emergency and we were eligible for it. So staff, uh, in conclusion is recommending that the City Council will consider by four-fifths both, vote adoption of the resolution declaring the existence of a local emergency caused by the COVID-19 threat and declaring the continuation of the state of the local emergency. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Moppy. Any questions from, uh, council? Uh, let's see, uh, there is none and uh, Stephen, is there any, um, public comment on this one?
Um, let me refresh. No, there's none.
Uh, thank you very much, Stephen, and especially, uh, uh, being able to fly immediately right on the whim. Thank you so much. Doing a great job. All right, any, uh, comments from council? Hearing none, uh, may we have a roll call, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. My apologies. Uh, any further discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Ms. D. Giovanni?
Hi.
Ms. Manalo? Ms. Manalo?
Hi.
Dr. Rod?
Hi.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Hi.
Mrs. Sylvester?
Hi. Okay, the, uh, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Moppy.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is, uh, public appearances. And communications. Mr. Stephen, any public comment?
We did not receive any public comments on our, uh, virtual meeting page.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stolti. Okay, are there any appointments to boards, commissions, membership committee appointments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Next item is item number 10, council committee reports. And we do have one listed, which is, uh, city council meetings between the period of April 27th through May 7th. And, uh, this was the meeting by, uh, uh, in regards to, uh, CDBG funding and, uh, I'll ask Dr. Rod to start it off and, uh, I'll gladly chime in, or do you want me to go first?
You can go first.
Okay, I can go first. Um, as you can see in your staff report, there has been additional monies to the amount of $632,000 and $285 for Daly City. And through various questions that was asked of, uh, economic development, uh, our housing community development supervisor, Betsy Zobel, and housing coordinator, Linnell Siligwin, and Brandon Phillips, who was on the call, economic development specialist, and of course, I, I won't forget Tatum. Apparently, we had a long discussion on how we were going to divvy up these funds. And to make a long story short, besides the additional monies that has been given to the Daly City Partnership to the tune of $80,000 prior, which was exhausted already, and Ms. Moppy, in her infinite wisdom, requested, uh, additional $150,000, which was given. It is believed that those funds will be exhausted during this, uh, current pandemic. So, uh, Dr. Rod and I gave direction to the committee to allocate a total, the whole amount of $632,285 for rental assistance and housing in Daly City for the COVID-19 pandemic. Now, if you don't know, the Daly City Partnership does a tremendous job in vetting out to put the particular folks that who are in desperate need of housing assistance, and according to the staff report, they cannot receive housing assistance for over three months. The money will remain in Daly City's coffers. It's not in a allocation that's just going to be given to them in one lump sum. But basically, it remains in the Daly City coffers and they will draw on it as needed. So, uh, that's a total of, again, $632,285. Uh, committee felt that this is the best use of the funds. Uh, other ideas came up with putting it elsewhere, but that would require additional administrative costs, such as monitoring and, uh, other costs. But this was the easiest and the best way to use the funds. And that's my report. Dr. Rod, did I cover it or anything you want to add?
Um, I had a couple of things. I think you did a great job, Mayor. Um, I think based on my notes, uh, we were just talking about, uh, why was it, um, why was $126,457 for program administration? It's like, there's an additional layer of roles that have to be done because of a pandemic and because of this unprecedented pandemic. Um, there are added roles, there's added layers of responsibilities. And with that, there has to be a lot of money to, uh, be allocated for administration. Um, we found that this is the most, um, just echo the staff on their report, that this is probably the best way of identifying an organization like Daly City Partnership that has had a track record serving our communities. Um, also $430,828 for rental assistance and because of everybody, um, either losing your jobs, being furloughed. And that would be under Daly City Partnership as well, because of their relationship and their, their infrastructure in terms of doing this work. So I had agree with the staff and with the mayor in terms of, of this recommended action.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Uh, is any, uh, further questions of, um, our colleagues? Okay, hearing none, uh, there are, okay, are there any other, uh, yes, Mr. Ventura?
Well, I thought I saw some, some news article that, um, that talked about the, the federal government eliminating funds because we're a, to sanctuary cities. Do, do you know anything about that and what, what, how does that impact this?
Um, I'm going to defer to Madam City Attorney, but in looking at the staff report, I think this came about as a Corona Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, which was the CARES Act, which was enacted by Congress, uh, just on March 27th, so that this was an allocation from that. What happens in the future, I, I'll defer to, uh, Madam City Attorney.
Um.
Or Tatum.
Yeah, I, um, I'm not aware of that formally, um, Councilmember. Uh, I know that there are certain funds that the federal government or you were expressly stating your sanctuary city that they may not allocate, but my understanding with regards to these funds, that, that was not the case. Um.
Good. Uh, thank you, Madam City Attorney. Uh, Tatum, did you want to add? Uh, did we get that right?
Um, we can certainly get a better answer for that. I think the recent, the headlines are, um, after we presented to the committee, so we will confirm, confirm. Um, I would just want to confirm with the City Attorney, are we indeed, um, declared as a sanctuary city? I believe we're a welcoming city and I don't want to.
I mean, yes, it's.
We would also be subject to that.
Right, I mean, i- i- in the eyes of what is a true sanctuary city, we are not resolved to be a sanctuary city. Uh, we are termed to be a welcoming city and, uh, for purposes of how the current administration looks at it, I guess the, the argument is that while we have the values of a sanctuary city, we're not expressly stated to be a formal sanctuary city.
Thank you, uh, Tatum, for that clarification and Madam City Attorney. And I do recall that we are a welcoming city, but the value, very good answer. Just like an attorney, very good. All right. Okay, uh, uh, Councilmember Buena Ventura, did that help? Did that answer part of your question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You got it. Okay, were there any other council committee reports, uh, happened, happened between the, uh, the 27th and May? We just had the one listed for CDBG. Were there any other, uh, committee? I don't think there were any, but the next will come under, uh, meetings under City Council. Okay, uh, item number 11, City Council Committee Meetings. Do we have any reports? Uh, virtual, yes, uh, Pam, go ahead.
I just know where on the agenda we can mention it because I'm sure, um, all of you, my colleagues would, about the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, which is May, and probably that's coming up in our, in next proclamation or something.
Uh, sure, uh, we can make mention of that. Do you want to start off? And I believe, uh, the Vice Mayor had something to do with that proclamation, which we passed at the last council meeting regarding, uh, xenophobia and the Asian, uh, uh.
Pacific American Heritage, yes.
Yeah, so.
And then I, um, I yield to Vice Mayor for the month of May. Thank you, because, um, I had gotten several messages on that today.
Okay, um, Vice Mayor, did you want to provide some information on that? I have a little bit of information, but Vice Mayor? Okay, uh, maybe she stepped away for, uh, a moment.
Okay.
Yes, there she is. Okay, uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor? Uh. Oh, I'm, I'm here, I'm here. Um, yeah, I'm here. Um, well, thank you. Um, we, we still have another council meeting in the end of May, right? And so therefore, um, that was the time that I, you know, we would.
We actually, sorry to interject.
I was hoping to close out the month with, uh, honoring, um, the Asian Pacific American community. And, um, since very, since very recently, um, you know, we passed a resolution, um, that denounces the xenophobia, but also, um, it, it was highlighting that, you know, Asian Americans have been, uh, contributing to our society and community, uh, for, uh, and to the nation. So, I think it was appropriate to manager, uh, hello?
Can you hear me? This is Shauna.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry, um, I certainly can put something on the next agenda. However, I was going to, in my update, remind council and the public that our next meeting is canceled due to the Memorial Day holiday. So if we do move forward with this proclamation and we are happy to prepare this, it would be June 8th.
Oh, thank you. I, that, that, sorry. I thought that we, we had a meeting at the end of the month. Um, everyone's saying that they can't hear me. I don't know why at this moment I have that service. I apologize. Maybe I need to move to a different part of my home. Can everyone hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, so given the fact that we do not have a council meeting at the end of May, then I think the very first meeting we would do so, but, um, yeah, the, the hope was to do it, uh, to close out the month. But, um, thank you so much. I, why don't we have a council meeting?
It's due to the Memorial Day holiday.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, COVID-19. everything, like, is warped. Uh, I don't, sometimes the day will be meeting June.
Say again, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, may we please have? Mister Mayor, may we please have, uh, the, uh, um, honoring our API community in, in June as, uh, we do not have.
Okay, Vice Mayor, uh, I'm hearing, uh, you're breaking in and out that you would, uh, make a request that we have the, uh, resolution done in the month of June, since we won't have a meeting in May. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. There you go. You got it. Great. Gotcha. I see Shauna's.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. Uh, Pam, did you want to add anything else to that? Did Pam hear me, uh, Stephen?
Pam, did you hear the mayor?
Pardon?
Uh, the mayor asked if you, if you have anything to add.
About what? I'm sorry to hear you.
About the deferral, about the, um, putting off of the proclamation and acknowledgement until our next council meeting in June. Did you have anything else you would like to add to that?
Oh, no, thank you, but thank you for asking, Mr. Mayor. I apologize for not hearing you.
Oh, no, no, it's all good. It's all good. We're all having, uh, issues here. Okay, great. Uh, still on item number eleven, any other city council reports? I know you folks been busy. A lot of things has been happening. Okay, uh, Mr. Buena Ventura, do you want to reiterate, uh, Sunday?
No, I'll defer to Mr. Mayor.
Further me, uh. Dr. Rod, you're smiling. Did you have something that you would like to report to us?
Um, as of, uh, Philan Democratic Club, San Mateo County, uh, put together a Philan, Filipino-American community feed yesterday. Um, I don't know the, the solid numbers of how many people were served, but we were greeted with, um, various leaders of the community. We had, uh, Phil Ting, Senator, Senator Scott Weiner, um, part of some of, um, the mayor, uh, Councilmember Buena Ventura, Vice Mayor Manalo, we're all there. Um, I think it was a fantastic event. We also had, um, the DCPD that was there controlling the traffic. Um, it was an extraordinary event where we, we, it was a basic, um, program. We had a chicken adobo and rice and it was packed into, um, two bags and we had a handful of volunteers. I don't really know the, the full statistics, but it was a lot of us that were out there, um, handing out everything from food to flowers, pandisol, babinka cakes, uncooked rice, given everything. So, um, I think that, um, the response from the community, um, based on, uh, my interactions on social media, they're very thankful and very, um, just from the bottoms of heart out, it was, it was so, um, um, it just showed a lot of care in terms of providing that type of, like, food in, in terms of times such as this. So I just wanted to, um, speak on that. I know, um, other council members, if y'all want to share as well.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Um, Ray, uh, Councilmember Buena Ventura is being very humble, but I'll provide my comments as well. Uh, thank you for that, Dr. Rod. Um, we had originally intended to feed five hundred people. And the pouring of, the outpour of donations, I maintain the list and just for folks donating, my numbers add up to nine hundred and forty-two. Along with a fundraiser to raise funds, the committee decided to, why not spend the funds and add extra? And as Dr. Rod had made mention, uh, it included babinka cakes, uh, pandisal, which is like a bread, and, uh, other items. And we made a change as well. In addition to individual meals, the majority of our meals were put in trays to feed a family of five. And, uh, folks would drive up, they pick it up, no questions asked, a family of five. And I know at one, uh, at one point, I noticed, uh, same car come back again. So I had, uh, Chief Henley standing by and I says, wow, that car has been around three times. And the chief, in his very observant skills, he said, no, Mayor, that car came around four times. And I had to laugh, but at the onset, it was, uh, Ray's, uh, concern that, uh, we're here to provide a service to the community and if they had to go around that many times, they're probably hungry. So it was a great event and, um, again, kudos to, uh, Daily City Police Department and all the volunteers who were there. And again, once, uh, the firefighters with that big old pot of, uh, adobo that they made as well. And, uh, Stephen, I, I told you that we ordered food from Nix on Geneva.
Yes.
Uh, vegan. Well, we put aside some for you. So I dropped, uh, three plates off for you today at City Hall. I kept the refrigerator and, uh, so you, uh, it's there for you, but if you want to share, please do. That's all I have. All right. Okay. Any other comments? Uh, Vice Mayor or Ray, did you want to finish it off? No, I'm good. Thank you. Okay, Vice Mayor?
Uh, just want to say thank you to everyone that supported, uh, whether you cooked, you, um, donated. Um, it was all, uh, as they call it, a bay nihan. Bay nihan in Tagalog means, you know, really when, um, in the Philippines, when they had to move, um, a, a house on bamboo sticks, everyone in, uh, the neighborhood would come together, carry the house over. And that was that, that spirit that happened, uh, on Mother's Day. Um, you know, there was, there are mothers there, they, uh, mothers celebrating their Mother's Day cooking, um, preparing, organizing, and it was, uh, just a beautiful event, uh, to see. Um, and, uh, thank you for the idea, Councilmember Ray Buena Ventura, and a wonderful team that executed it and everyone that got involved. It, it, uh, was a, a success to feed those that were in need. And so, uh, also to the kindness of many, um, our local bakery, Bread Basket, you know, we ordered from them, but they also donated, uh, bread to add to, um, our food giveaway. So there was, um, um, many moments that we saw, even our, uh, local restaurant and West Lake, uh, Bit Rema, um, who supported and, uh, just generosity of those, um, that gave, um, the food, donated money. It was just a beautiful, uh, uh, Sunday afternoon. And for everyone, even the sun sh- 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 shined. It was foggy, but right when we were giving out the food, the sun came out. Uh, so, thank you.
Um, thank you, Vice Mayor. And one, uh, last important thing about the event. All the moms who came by, they received flowers also as well. So, uh, very good. Okay, um, any other, excuse me, uh, city council reports? Okay, moving on to item number twelve, any staff reports?
Uh, hi, thank you, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members, just really quickly, because for some reason I'm hungry. And if I'm hungry, that means the mayor's hungry.
I can't, you see me keep looking?
Oh, man, I'm hearing. I'm just like, my stomach's growling. So, um, I, I, as you know, I sent you earlier all council about a four-page memo, uh, updates on what the city's been doing during this pandemic and how city services look now. Um, so I'm not going to really belabor it too much, um, especially since we covered so much of what we're doing, uh, throughout the meeting. And, um, you know, from all of the proclamations, uh, from all of the hard work that everybody's doing, it's, it's really interesting that we're doing things via Zoom and virtually, but somehow it feels like we've gotten closer, which is this interesting irony in all of this. And it's kind of this, the beautiful part of this really challenging time. So, um, I'm really proud of all the work that everyone's doing. Just to shout out a few things that the community might be interested in on this four-page memo that I sent earlier. Um, you know, we all know that the shelter in place was extended. Um, however, uh, construction can resume. I know we got a lot of questions about construction and so our, uh, Economic and Community Development Department continues to offer a full array of services through phone and email. Uh, we're still accepting project applications electronically. We're doing building inspections and code enforcement inspections through video. Um, so please reach out to staff, uh, at ECD, um, because we're, we're doing a lot of the full service, um, uh, right now, especially now that construction resumed. Uh, for food distribution, um, as you know, we, we, mo- most of us were there at the Second Harvest Food Bank that was, uh, uh, at Ceremone. So many of the city staff were deployed there. That was a great event. My understanding is that seven hundred and fifty households were, were served at that event. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can hear you. She's doing just fine.
Okay, great. Uh, we're continuing to deploy city staff to the community service center to help out and to help out with hip housing, uh, matching volunteers, um, from the citywide volunteer database, uh, with requests for food assistance and food distribution. Um, moving on to homeless and housing assistance, I know that's a question we get now and again in the city manager's office. We are facilitating connections between the community service center's homeless outreach team and homeless individuals in, in our community. Um, our police department is responding to homeless individuals requesting shelter. However, um, individuals, uh, need to be processed, processed through a court agency for them to get services. Um, and as, uh, the mayor made mention earlier, we did provide an additional amount to the community service to assist, uh, with rental assistance in that area. For small business assistance, uh, the, the most recent daily news did focus on business support and was mailed to nearly two thousand businesses. And we have a more robust website, uh, dailycity.org/businessresources, which is maintained by ECD. Um, San Mateo County Strong, we're getting a lot of applications for help, uh, seeking help. Um, and we are, uh, in closing, we are preparing to reopen to some semblance of normal at some point this year. We don't know when that will be. We don't know when the governor's going to change the shelter in place, but please know that, that staff is doing things like, uh, you know, what will the workplace look like? It may not look like it looks now, but we're going to put partitions in between employees and those kinds of things. So we are thinking ahead. Um, and that's all I have to report out and just keep up the great work to council and staff. I'm so super proud of our community and all that we're doing during this time.
Hey, thank you, um, Ms. Malp, the, um, excellent report. Um, thank you for following up on the homeless issue. I did make mention about that on the call today to find out, uh, how we go about it, because, you know, we had one person who came into City Hall who basically was looking for some help, but I also learned that not anyone can just get the help because they have to have some maybe condition to which, uh, they would need help. And it's good to know conditions such as maybe they're sick or, um, other conditions. And it's good to know that you and the police department are right up on it as a conduit and along with Daily City Partnership to help our folks in need at this time. You know, I'm all about equity for North County and I want to make sure we get ours. And thanks to you, Ms. Malp, I can see by the applications submitted and what Daily City has submitted, we are up there. I think something like four hundred and twenty-eight applications. So that tells me something. We are acting on every resource that we can possibly get during this, uh, crisis. And we are the largest city in San Mateo. So outstanding work, especially the collaboration of everyone here, include all council members who's getting the word out. So, uh, I'm very appreciative of that. Thank you. All right, um, next item. Yes, uh, Mr. Buena Ventura?
Yeah, I noticed, uh, uh, I wanted to hear something from staff. I saw in City Hall, there's a big old sign out in the front. What's that all about?
Mayor Sylvester, I'll let you do the honors on that.
Um, a Daily City resident who I've corresponded many a times to include him having recent surgery and he cannot get food, but reaching out to people and, uh, and Leilani knows this as well because she's developed a relationship with a constituent. And, you know, people just want a sense of hope. But getting to the point here, this person used to work for the city and county of San Francisco. His son is a firefighter in San Francisco. He lives in Daily City and he loves what Daily City is doing. So he bought this sign giving, uh, honor to our healthcare workers, police, fire, public safety, you name it. And, uh, I brought it to, uh, our city manager and she was a little apprehensive at first because she didn't see it. You know, I could send her a message at two o'clock in the morning. Well, uh, yeah, okay, I'll, I'll take a look. And she's, uh, taken initiative to, uh, make sure that, uh, it was okay to do. And the person kept bugging me and saying, well, when you going to do it? When you going to do it? And this was a day after I got it. And I, I told him, hey, we've got other important things to do. Anyway, make a long story short, uh, I'm so happy that the sign was posted in front of City Hall. I expected, uh, fish wire to be strung between two poles and posted. But, uh, Public Works, uh, Mr. Chu, oh, he's still here. Um, what they did is they actually built a platform and forty-five degrees, nailed it to the roof and, uh, even I wouldn't even get up there. So, uh, thank you, Ms., uh, Mr. Buena Ventura for reminding me of that. Uh, we are to acknowledge our healthcare workers and all public safety and everybody as to what they do. And I'd like to take this time to acknowledge Mr. Tony Pastrano, a resident here in Daily City who provided the sign and he was more than happy to do so. Thank you. Did I get it, Mr. Buena Ventura? Okay.
Yes. And wonderful, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, any other comments? Okay, uh, adjournment. I do have one request, so I'll start off. Oh, my goodness. Uh, I had, okay, here it is. I'd like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Mr. Jose Villar Marquez. And I'll send the information over to staff. He was eighty-two years of age. His son is, uh, Mark Marquez, who's a police officer in San Francisco. And, uh, he lived a great life and I'd like to adjourn in memory of him. Another is, another police officer in San Francisco, uh, Ms. Correa, and I'll send this information over. And mom, I believe she was ninety-eight. So I'd like to adjourn this memory, uh, this meeting in memory of both of them. Do we have any other adjourned memories at this time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two, if you don't mind.
Please do, council member.
Uh, thank you very much. Ms. Evelyn Sasso Alonso, a longtime Daily City resident, passed away with pancreatic cancer. She was known as the dancing queen, whether it was at Bury-Bury, United Seniors Club or Angel Seniors Club. Um, she had a son that passed away with cancer, who, what's his name, in two thousand and fifteen. And so she's dancing and having with him. And then it's sadly, it's probably someone that we know in our community. Uh, surpassing, uh, Rebecca Douglas Dempsey, uh, husband, who passed away suddenly on Friday night. Uh, and, uh, she was our former, on our Jefferson Elementary School Board. She also worked at our Westlake Library, longtime resident of Daily City. And he was a former professor, retired professor, matter of fact, at SFSU. In two thousand and eighteen, they both decided to retire, sell their home in Daily City and to, they love to be in the outdoors, hike and travel. And along with that, ended up in Chico to take care of, uh, his parents. And along with that, ended up in Chico to take care of, uh, his parents. So it was sad news, uh, we say, he leaves behind two sons, but Doug Dempsey, uh, passed away suddenly after only having his retirement a short period of time. And if anyone wants to send condolences to Chico, um, I have the address. I can give it to Angie to send a card. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Dejavani. Please do submit that information. And, uh, we'll, uh, we will definitely notify, uh, them that we have adjourned this meeting in honor of them. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, I'd like to, uh, take this opportunity, if we may, uh, we've just announced names adjourned in memory of, uh, certain folks. And this, uh, to add on, this also goes out to all the recent deaths of this pandemic, COVID-19. I was looking on my list and, uh, I could be, I, I think I'm correct. But for the first time since this pandemic started, I noticed in the stats from, for two days, we haven't had any additional cases confirmed and neither we had any more deaths. So, uh, that's great news, but we're not out of the woods yet. Okay, so we will adjourn this meeting in honor of, uh, in memorial of those mentioned. And if we can pause for a brief moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you very much. This meeting is now adjourned. Be healthy, be safe. Thank you for what you all continue to do. And until next meeting, we'll see you then. Thank you.